Ability to, the chance to break the record for sure.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the New Market Town Council meeting for November 19th, 2014. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin this evening's meeting with public forum. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Mr. Allen, please come up.
Well.
Name addressed real quick, serial. Name addressed real quick, just for the record.
Oh, 56th and Garrison Road, New Market, New Hampshire. Gee. Seems we have a budgetary increase always. Real interesting coffee shop talk downtown, among other places. Has anybody thought about considering the season, tis the season is coming up to start chipping, where electricity goes three times the rate and they pay the highest possible amount for wood chips? That we have an awful lot of, million tons of chips available to the town at, well, right now it's $97 a ton. It will probably go up to about $160 even with oil coming down because they can't fire oil over there. They have to fire electricity and we burn, these lights turn on for the shiller plant needing chips. There are plenty of out of work for the season up north, shipping companies. If you did all your right of ways, your town land, did a 50/50 split with them, you have a million tons at least, that would only be cut in half. You can do your side roads like you do like Durham does, turn it over to them with a 50/50 split, run a few advertisements. You want your heavy traffic running over the road when the ground is frozen so it doesn't tear up your infrastructure. It's the only time you can move heavy chip trucks. Less than 45 minutes, instead of them running all the way from Vermont, the top of Maine, down to get one load in a day, two, three, four loads in a day with one truck from New Market. They'd be more than rent, rent a house. A crew comes down, rent a house, they stay here Monday through Friday, work here, go home for the weekend. I'm sure there's plenty of people want, want the work up there. We generate an awful lot of money. This is the time to harvest those chips. Instead of, you know, I don't know if you guys watch the exchange, watch what's currency's going across the world, what they're doing. Japan announced recession three days ago. Oil goes down. Metal has never been lower. 1983, I never got below. It's $40 a ton below what I got right now. Okay, that was in 1983. It has just completely fallen oil to the bottom. The only thing that's holding this price is aluminum, which will bring me to another subject. This is the time to get rid of those chips. Those chips are carbon, gather the numbers on them because you can use them for carbon credits, guys. Everybody's trying to buy carbon credits to compete. Sell them off, PUC, the credits you get on the tonnage. Here's your, there's your money. There's not more than enough money to offset. Now, let me see. There's six, there's three tons to one quarter wood, four by four by eight. You're taking the whole tree, which is with no leaves on it, limbs, everything. There's no waste, 100% used, run it right straight through the chippers and it goes right, right down to them. They have a shaker and they sort it down there. We're in the perfect location. We need the money. That's one particular thing. We also have the lands, things that we didn't do that, I hate to say it, my selectmen relatives did here in this town, is we always had a pit. That pit offsets your cost of doing your roads, including new road that never got around to being done. The base on is about 65%, 65% of the cost of doing your road. Look at what you just put in just to do Ash Swamp Road. Did not make sense? We have a 5,000 yard exemption per year to open up some of our properties to sand and gravel, which all the sand and gravel we have that's left is basically on the new roadside of 108. And start taking our own gravel. That's 65% of our road cost. Then you spend, instead of putting that money into topping a problem that's going to re-break up. Do the base right. We have the base. Do what our old fathers used to do when they ran the town. We always ran our own pit. Three months out of the year, we had a, now we never, we had to buy ours, shakers to sort stone, sand, the works. You can rent them for three months from Milton Caterpillar. Rent your brand-new shaker plant. You have a tractor. Put a person to work, you know, there's plenty of, the tractor sits. Drop all day long, a bar, a bucket load into thing and sort it, left and right. Why are we buying gravel and sand everywhere to do these projects? Why are you spending that kind of money doing these surface roads when you look at the cost of the road, it's 65% base? We have the base right here. We have the best base. Better than Barrington's sand and gravel. That's Glacier Drive. Anyway, we won't get into.
Can you wrap it up soon?
Your field, Mr. Levy, that you had brought up before, that we're mowing, that we're mowing down on the Wilson farm. There are plenty of farmers in the area who would like to hay that, okay, and would do it for free. All you gotta do is put out another thing.
Mr. Allen, with all due respect, calm down. That's not my field. So, if you want to call it the Wilson property, that's fine.
Wilson, okay.
Just relax.
Okay. We designated $5,000 for containers. Right now, metal went down. A container is number two metal. It's same thing as a C can, 8,310 pounds. For a C can with a roof off, it's 7,000 pounds, those containers. We're at 100 and, about 155, 160 a ton. So, we're looking at about $300, $375 worth of scrap on those containers. There's nothing around that just needs patching. Run them over to the guy across the street. We have our own dumpster hauler. Spend 500 bucks on them, get used cans. Don't waste them on a $5,000 can when you can have five cans. Take your aluminum cans up there. Take it with aluminum cans in, like Milton, Farmington do over there, Rochester. Every week, they make a phone call, who's got the highest price that needs to load their truck going out, pays the top price on the cans, and they pay you a check right there for the thing. Run one load over. That puts money, cash, directly into the manager's pocket for your slush, slush back and forth. You need places like, especially this year, sand and gravel was just announced, went up 62% across the country per ton for sand and gravel. Increase, unexpected. You need some cash slosh inside the budget for problems.
Can you, you getting close?
Feel, I got the.
Why don't you make one more, one more suggestion and then if you want to put this on, on some kind of email, just send it to us and we can evaluate it.
Okay.
If that would help.
Portland Pager Company also has the problem, the units they use for the paramedics that responds to us, are the same used units that Wentworth Douglas. You can get rentals, instead of buying these expensive units that they shot with the fire department, you can basically get a rental unit for $20 a month. There's an alternative way of doing it through Portland Pager Company in Portland. If, that's up past the roast beef place up there, getting off 295. They have those rental, that's where they, the paramedic company over here, Exeter Ransom, and that's where Wentworth Ransom. And that's including, the whole cost is $20. I mean, why are we outlaying, they're not the radio, they're not the big, huge things that they can show around in public, OGM or firefighter. They do the same thing. They give you the software, automatically comes out of dispatch, they get all the information right there. They pick their radio up in the truck. Okay, so, trying to field you things that you may not know and have time to run around to save on the budget. People are real upset. They wanted to go for a 0% tax cap. Bring the numbers up, boom. So, you have to have a special election on it. And enough of this increase every year. He started it over there in Durham, the manager over there. They're at that particular point. This has got to stop. Increases every year. If you put a zero cap, cap, that stops the state, that stops everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else from the public? Counselor Bentley, you had your light on?
No, that's for after the last comment.
So, we're all set?
Yep.
Seeing no other public comment, we'll close public comment at 7:19. Next on the agenda.
I was gonna make a motion to seal minutes, that's why I had that lit.
Oh, well, okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to seal the non-public minutes of earlier.
Second.
Bentley Weinstein. Discussion, seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Carmichael.
Aye.
Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Counselor Bentley.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
For acceptance of minutes, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the October 25th, 14?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. No one, Counselor Nazaro.
It's more, it's more like an overall, and this is not to say anything mad about Patricia, that it seems like the minutes synopsize really well everything that the town employees said and not at all anything that the counselors, like, our questions asked. So.
Well, I was instructed to not put names because there was, we're already, and so I just.
Oh, well, let's get rid of that person. Who told you that? Was that Fornia?
No. It's supposed to be a synopsis of discussions of what happened. So, usually it's a, it doesn't have to be a verbatim, but a synopsis.
I didn't put names.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, whoever gave you that direction, that's fine. I'm just saying this like for, that it, yeah, I just made the comment. Thank you very much.
That's why I didn't.
No, you did a great job synopsizing everything that the town, like, the employees said.
Well, everywhere I served, it was such a justice.
That's meant to be that there was, okay.
Counselor Pike.
I was, I was gonna make a similar comment because it does help, in terms of remembering the meeting, I find it much easier to remember what went on when I remember who said what. And I think it does add some context. So, I, not, not to go back for this one, but I think that, that would be.
I might suggest, actually, because it was the budget, otherwise I wouldn't really, it wouldn't be imperative to me. But my take on it is, I would take October 25th and 29th, which I believe were both budget meetings. Am I correct? And, you know, review of the budget. And I would redo them. I, I would. I, because I didn't, with all due respect, at least my take on it was, I think a lot of the questions that were asked by counselors, you know, were not as, as clear. If, if someone goes back and reviews this, this isn't a criticism, this is just a, you know, I think it's important to make sure we, you know, get this right to some degree, particularly for the budget. If, if, and I think names should be mentioned, but that's me. You know, I don't know why someone would say no names. But that said, we should be annotating what was asked, the answers that were received, not basically, this is why we need a 2% increase, or why we need this, or why we need that. And if there's questions back and forth, they should be stated. So, I would, I would table, just me, I don't know how other people feel, but I would table the minutes for 25th and 29th and, and just redo those so we have an accurate history.
I can add some more information to them.
I think that would be worthwhile. I don't know how other people feel, but that's how I feel.
For the record, I just want everybody to know that until such time, these are the minutes that we have. So, in case anybody asks for the 144-hour law, draft minutes do become minutes. And if anybody wants to review them, they're on the record, so.
Okay. I mean, I'd, I'd rather vote in the affirmative when I feel they reflect. But, but, is everybody okay? If people don't want to do that, that's fine with me, but that's my take. Is there any objection to holding off?
No. Yeah, I have no objection. I would, I would say, and in agreement with what you said, I, I think the, you know, you may not have every, back and forth, every comment.
Yeah, we don't need every, every little.
But when the, when a quite, major question comes up, you know, a significant question, you know, it should be identified with the counselor and the, the major topics around that, yeah.
And that wasn't meant to, you don't have to be sorry or anything because it's, there's a lot. Believe me, that was a long meeting. So, yeah, don't.
Yeah, it, it does happen, yeah.
Yeah, believe me, we're not, this isn't a, meant to be a criticism at all. Do I have a motion to accept the November 5th, 2014 regular meeting?
So moved.
There wasn't one.
Am I missing something?
There was a hard copy in a box.
Yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't a meeting on the 25th, that was a Saturday.
No, the 5th.
November 5th. He just said November 5th.
I thought, I thought, did I not say it right?
No, you did.
You did say it right.
Was that not a, a meeting?
No, I'm being silly.
No, you got it.
I'm gonna gun to here.
Okay. Well, hold on, let's, let's.
I got it. I didn't, I didn't get a second. I've got counsel.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. This is fine, as far as I'm concerned, but does anybody have any changes they'd like to make or questions or observations? We just sort of got this recently, so if anybody wants to review it. I think this is fine for me. I didn't read every word, but I think it basically was.
It looked fine. Yeah, it was a pretty light meeting anyways.
And that was a regular meeting, just so you know. The, the reason, I think, for the, for the previous comment was because it's a budget. And the Budget Committee may want to go back and review some of the minutes and that for obvious reasons. Seeing no.
Number of questions brought up.
Excuse me?
Whether it's a picture number of questions brought up in the notes, just you want to know who said what.
We can go, I know it. We can talk about it. Give me a call.
I think a little of both.
Yeah. I know what they're looking for.
Okay. We're all set with these. I see no other lights. Please call the roll.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Carmichael.
Stand.
Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Counselor Bentley.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0 to 1.
Report of the Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are hard copies at your table of my report this evening. First item is that the Chiefs of Police fired and the Directors of IT, Environmental Services and Public Works, and I am investigating the implementation of a reverse 911, commonly now known as Code Red in the community. This is a system in which we can notify residents either townwide or in certain areas of emergencies via landlines, cell phones, text messages, email, or apps on their mobile phones. For those who have students, it's sort of the townwide version of you getting a call if there's no school day, but we use it for much different things. There are two levels of services that we'll be able to provide. First, there will be what we refer to as the emergency services. It allows us to use pre-populated database of phone numbers to contact residences and businesses by using a GIS system. So, literally, we take a map, we draw around it, and they have a database of people's home phone numbers in that area so we can make phone calls. And what the emergencies want to be used for are situations such as sheltering in place, boil water orders, evacuations, missing persons, et cetera. This service has an opt-out portion of it. The other one would be for important notices such as street closures, hydrant replacements, change in polling hours, paving schedules, et cetera. This has an opt-in portion of it. So, you have to sign up for that one. We're gonna be meeting with the company again this week and hope to have it implemented in early 2015. We are gonna be able to fund it from current appropriations. Just to let you know that the state is implementing a reverse 911 only on the emergency portion, and it has to go through Concord first and then get approved and then do it again. This will allow us to control it from our own dispatch and, as well as other departments. So, for example, say if we knew a water main broke in the area of, the high school. We can literally take a, draw on the map, a circle around there and all those homes that are affected, and it'll do one message, send out a phone call, text message, cellphone message, as well as, there's a Code Red app to notify them that water's gonna be out, and we can give them updates on how long. So, we're just trying to do it as another way to be able to notify people. Just to let you know, I've talked to the town clerk, tax collector, and want the council to know that we've collected as of date the 54% of taxes due. This is on schedule and as most people pay either early or at the end of the due date period. And what we haven't received yet, what we refer to as the big ones, which are the mortgage companies. We should be getting those shortly. And just a reminder that tax dues, our, bails are due December 5th. We're moving forward with the auditorium improvements. It'll not be able to be used for the first few weeks in December. We've talked to all departments as well as the school that that's gonna be happening. In addition to replacing the carpet and painting in that downstairs, we thought it would be a good time to update the audio equipment as well as the equipment for Channel 13. We've heard a number of issues with being able to hear in that room, so we want to make sure that that gets done at the same time as well. And just two things that are not on my written report. One, that, just remind the public that on Thanksgiving Day at 1 o'clock, Jeremy's Pizza is hosting a free Thanksgiving dinner in town again, and they're looking for donations or assistance or allow people to come. It'll be 1 PM at the high school this year, since it's been becoming very popular. If you need information, go to jeremysthanksgiving.org and you can sign up so you can get a preliminary number if you want to sign up to assist. That's a good place to do so. And I just want to take this opportunity to wish the council and the public a very happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Administrator?
Counselor Weinstein, please.
So, you, when you were explaining the reverse 911, you, you said cell phones.
Yeah.
So, do people have to opt, like, if it's a cellphone, you have to opt in?
Yeah, they're gonna have to sign up. We don't have cellphone numbers. And that's very important. We're gonna, as soon as this happens, the company that does it will help us with the media campaign. And one of the things that we want to get are, I mean, a lot of renters no longer use landlines. And that's our big concern. We want to make sure that they sign up for their cellphone so they can get the information. And so, we're gonna probably include, we have, we have welcome packets that we hand out. We'll include that in there to sign up at that time.
Great. And then I just had a couple other things from the.
No problem.
Report. I just wanted to mention in the DPW report about the beavers, I just thought it was really amusing, that they're, that they're going to relocate them. And as someone who had two beavers relocated recently, they're relocated permanently. I didn't mention that. And then I also wanted to mention, I brought up during closing comments at the last meeting about the welfare, and I was really happy to see that it was put on the website. I also sent everybody a little write-up about resources that are available in New Market, and I, and we actually redid it a little bit. So, I have hard copies for everyone if they want. And I know you put all that information on the site. And so, it was really great to see it there. So, thank you.
And the, just to let you know that the welfare director's gonna be revising that as well.
Yeah, you know, and this isn't town, you know, this, this didn't come from the town. It came from a resident who put it together to go into, to be posted, you know, as needed and to go into bags at the food pantry.
Yep.
So.
Very good. Any other questions? I just had a couple, Steve.
Sure.
And I think we've touched on it, but I just want to bring it up just to remind you. The DPW equipment, vehicle maintenance, you know, is obviously up. If you look at the equipment maintenance and the vehicle maintenance, both are, last year we were at 64, now we're at 12 on one, when we were at 16, now we're at 18.
Yep.
So, I would just, you know, it might be worth just discussing that with someone.
Yeah.
Regarding, you know, maybe keeping, because we haven't really even hit the.
Tough part.
The stuff about, you know, driving and the things breaking. I also noticed on page 33, and I just want to ask, water expended 62 this year to 17 last year. Is, was that because of a bunch of work that was done or contracted services?
Engineering services this year.
So, that's that.
Yeah.
I was also on page 39, Zunheit. I think if the council could just be apprised of, it's regarding the New Market Mills LLC. Just to, you know, I know that we talked about the coffee kiosk and cars spill out, just because sometimes things do fall through the cracks, not that it will in this case at all. But could we at least see the contract, you know, regarding if their cars do spill out, like, what's, what?
Yep. That's part of the appro, the.
No, no, I, I was just, I know, that they're gonna do that. That's, at least that's what we were told.
Right. But, that's the planning board does that, yeah.
Yeah. So, is there a chance that, you know, in the report, because we do get the planning board reports, maybe we could just see what that looks like. And 44, page 44, I think it's the middle paragraph, traffic calming. Are we confident that we're receiving the grant and everything is on schedule?
Yep.
Okay. And I got one last question. That was it. And it has nothing to do with that. So, I'm done. That is it. Seeing no other lights, we are done with the Town Administrator's report. Committee reports, would anyone like to go over any committees meet, planning?
Yeah, I was at the JAC, but I'll review it on Channel 13 and have a full report for the next minute.
Okay. Do you want to review the JAC? Sure?
I sure.
Going once, going twice? Did anyone else, all right, Dale? Did you have a?
I did, I did met last week.
Yeah, you wanted, or Monday night, excuse me.
Yeah, let me do it.
Yeah. I mean, it was, it was really going over what we went in, in the, in our, in our budget deliberations. I, and Administrator was there and it was, I think it was, you know, all in all, there were a few questions, but really, you know, and they're not, it's not something with that they are able to make changes, but really, I think people, there seem to be, and I would say there was a noticeable lack of controversy, so.
Well, that's, that's, listen, that's positive.
Just real quick to, just to remind the council that the budget public hearing is scheduled for December 15th. So.
Okay.
That's when the Budget Committee will be having their public hearing for the budget.
Are we all?
They will be, my understanding is.
Sort of a joint meeting or?
Nope. That's just, that's their meeting. My understanding is their, is their intent to approve.
Go, go find one.
To send it to public hearing next Monday and then we'll wrap it up.
Oh, and let me mention as well that the dam committee is having a site visit at the dam next week.
Well, you better do it before it starts to freeze.
There you go.
Conservation meet, Tony?
We did. Yeah, we met on the 13th. It was a relatively quick meeting. Talked about the fact that they sold all the composters. I don't know if there's a, there's a composting program in rain barrels and partnered, I don't know if partnered is the right word, but sold some through Durham also. So, had a setup there. There was talk about whether or not we could have a demonstration here somewhere in Town Hall. I think that there's, they tried that in years past and there's not a great spot for it. So, that was a little bit of a concern. And a question as to whether or not it's gonna, they're gonna order more. So, that's really.
Did they make a decision?
No. No, they're gonna look into the cost, because they didn't have figures or anything. So, and it took a couple years to sell the rain barrels and the composters that they had.
Anyone else? Not, this is tying into your meeting, but just for people's knowledge, not that they don't know, but there have been a few attacks with coyotes recently. I, I don't know if that falls under the purview of conservation, but.
Greenland checks.
Yes.
No check.
Maybe.
True. Something's going on. The animals are worse than.
I, I might be cogn, I might, you know, since I'm out there every day, I might not show up at a meeting since they're, they attacked someone. But we definitely have them around, around. So, I would be cognizant of, of, I guess, some, no, some of these have been aggressive. You know, it actually attacked a woman and her dog the other day and.
Yeah, Greenland.
Left her pretty messed up. But she's recovering well, I guess. The Joint Advisory Committee met. On the agenda was the, Randy had a litany, and I would suggest people watch it. It's gonna be hard to synopsize the whole thing, but I'll do my best. There were indicators of quality education, and he had comparisons of test scores and a variety of cost per pupil and broken down between elementary school and high school and ways for the group and hopefully the community to evaluate the different towns around us, dropout rates. I mean, there was, there's probably too many to mention without going through everything in the, in the packet. But I thought it was, it was good information for us to have, particularly if we're comparing ourselves to other communities and if there's any economy of scale there. He also discussed, and we discussed, the committee went through the building. I went through it last Wednesday, I think, Dan went through it on Friday. I was with Tom Jennings, and I don't know everybody in your group.
Darby and LaFara, yeah.
So I think everybody who hadn't been through both schools has been through both schools now, and it was, for me, very enlightening and, like I said last night, the kids were great, the teachers were very professional, very friendly, very helpful, they answered our questions. Principal Pine, I believe, in particular, was very, you know, forthright and showed us, you know, the concerns he had as well as Andruski. And we are also going to be scheduling a couple of public hearings, and we decided to postpone them until January for a variety of reasons, not the least of which it's December, and there's a lot of holiday stuff going on. But also, I think Randy will have more empirical data to share with us. I think we're going to be getting the document from Common Ground sometime this month, I'm guessing, from their Saturday meeting that they had a week or so ago. And I think the goal from, from our standpoint is to, when we do have the public forums, to have them, I think we wanted to try to have one either at the senior center, we didn't really nail it down, either Town Hall or perhaps the Rec Department, so we got a different mix of people, you know, people that, you know, may have trouble getting out and about or whatever, try to, try to go to them, you know, to get their input, because it's hard for a lot of the older folks to, to give input on these things. And let's see, other than that, what am I missing? I think, does that cover pretty much? Did I leave too much of?
Yeah, I think, like Martin mentioned, there's going to be another enrollment study done. I believe that group is NASDAQ, NASDAQ, and also they mentioned if they were to do a addition, 20,000 square foot addition, they're looking anywhere between rough figures, only between 3.7 or three, between, I think, 3 million and I think 4.7 million. That's just rough figures.
Yeah, that, I think, yeah, I think if, no, we're getting into the, to the real nitty-gritty, but I think new construction is pegged at about $235, the high side of doing a renovation. They're using the same number. They rev, they revamped their numbers as far as projections down to 550 from 650 just based on the population, and I think Randy is going to try to confirm that number to make sure it is consistent with people's opinions, maybe a demographer or someone to corroborate that. But, yeah, I think, I think that's going to be very important as far as being able to make a cogent and thoughtful decision, because if we're basing things on numbers that are not real, it's going to be very hard to make a good decision, so. I think, I think, you know, we're not moving as fast as everybody would like, but I think we are getting good information, and I think, oh, one last thing, we are going to try to have an engineer. I believe the school board actually hired an engineer. I know I'm going to screw up the name, so it's not important, but they went up to $8,000 to review the structure, and I believe it's the same engineer that had done the work at the previous time. I don't know how many years ago it was, but he's going to confirm that it hasn't really significantly changed. And that was really, you know, pretty much it, so. Any questions? Everybody good? And that is committee reports. Under new business, on page, I didn't miss anything, did I?
Economic Development?
Oh, thank you. EDC meeting. You know, Phil, I'm going to let you do EDC. What do you think? What do you think, big guy? You were there.
You're the chair.
Well, I'll do a review and then fill in, because I won't get it all. We met with, we met with John Connery. I thought John did a really nice job. That is also online, if anybody's interested in seeing it. John has, I think, came across very well. The feedback I got from members was good. He's got a lot of experience working with elderly housing and the companies. There's a variety of different types of elderly housing from, from, you know, 55 and up all the way to Kier, all the way to, you know, toward, toward the end and having full-service Kier and nursing and all the things that go along with that. And he is going to evaluate the new road area, he's going to be looking at 152, any other opportunities, he's going to look at recreation, he's, meaning as a, as a potential source of revenue for the town or a business to look into, and he's also going to look into office space a little bit and see if there's any opportunities there. He was very impressed with the town since he had been here the last time he did a response. He spent a lot of time in the town. I think he said he got here, our meeting was at 5:30. He had crepes at about 1:00, if that's worth anything. He was very impressed with the crepes. He actually went out to the property, the Wilson property, as well as other properties, and evaluated them yet again. I think he's the only consultant I've ever met who actually goes out there, and he is not like the guy in camo with an AK-47. He went out there and he checked it out, and he looked at the lay of the land. He did a really good job last time, and I think he's going to do a good job for us this time. So, did I leave anything out?
He's meeting with town staff tomorrow.
Yeah, he was meeting, he's having meetings with town staff. Having surgery.
Assessors or something?
Yeah, the assessors, planning.
Planning and myself tomorrow.
Yep, and he's, he's having surgery, so the committee's not going to be with him again until after the new year.
Yeah, January. By then, he'll get a lot of the work done, you said, I think, so.
And really, I think that my big takeaway from it was that there's no silver bullet, that it's going to take like the right mixture of development for the town to move forward healthily, and that recognizing that, going back to Peter Quas's analysis, that it's like, what, $43 million?
For one buck on the tax rate.
For a dollar on the tax rate. So this is not going to be any sort of like salvation for the tax rate, it's just going to be maintaining a healthy, positive economic climate within the community.
It is amazing that, you know, we, we work with the fund balance, because I did get some questions, not that it's completely tied in, but we don't have a long agenda tonight, about the, no impact on the tax rate, I think Steve heard it at the Budget Committee a little bit, you know, with all the Warren articles, and, and they're all valid things for the CIP. But, you know, we took, I think, roughly 20 cents off next year's tax rate on the town side, or we tried, we got somewhere close to that. And when you start thinking about 43 million in new buildings or development to make $1, and we're killing ourselves to get to 20 cents, it's very easy to spend a buck, but it, it really is not easy to get to a dollar of revenue for the tax rate, and, and I, I think that was a, he caught that point from the Quas study, and I think people's expectations have to be realistic. I don't think we want to, you know, take 300 acres in the town and turn it into something that's going to, you know, change the town, and he liked the small-town feel, and he really was very impressed with the community. I think we have a great community, so, anyway. Other than that, sorry, I didn't mean to go on in, I just couldn't help myself, so there you go.
It's not like you, Gary.
Boy, that's getting, that's getting those shots in.
Could you bowl face having over?
See an opening, see an opening.
No, I did. Did you have any committee report you'd like to speak to?
No, I'm all set, thank you. Thanks for asking.
Any more Bob Wire you want to throw around? Under new business, we're never going to get the old business done with that road, are we? We're never really going to.
We have, we have worked on it.
Under new business, page 50, Resolution 2014-15-31, transferring funds from the Revaluation Capital Reserve Fund, whereas the town meeting established a revaluation capital reserve fund for the purpose of paying the statistical update revaluation cost, and whereas the town council is appointed, has been appointed, excuse me, as agent to expend from the capital reserve fund for this purpose, and whereas the revaluation capital reserve fund has a balance of $50,013 as of September 30th, '14, and whereas the town contracted with Vision Government Solutions, Inc., to perform the contract for the amount not to exceed $46,800. Now therefore be resolved, Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve to transfer $46,800 from the revaluation capital reserve fund to the general fund for the purpose of paying revaluation costs. And that is the first reading. Just, I know we're not going to answer tonight, but is that going to be, are we going to, is it going to be a lot more than that?
Nope, that's it.
That's it? So there isn't, is that going to be, shut down that fund?
No, we keep it alive so in five years you can withdraw it again.
So we're going to put 10 in a year or something?
Yep.
Okay, got it. Next on page 51, Resolution 13-14-32, to authorize the town administrator to enter into two contract amendments with Hazen and Sawyer PC for engineering services related to the development of the McIntosh well. Whereas the town of Newmarket Water Department entered into a contract with Hazen and Sawyer PC for engineering service, services relating to the development of the McIntosh well, and whereas the following act amends, amendments have been submitted. Amendment number one, change the scope or change of scope identified during planning stage. Okay. And amendment number two, changed the location of water line to avoid $15,000 environmental revenue.
That should be review, not revenue.
Yeah, I do.
Because I wouldn't give up $15,000 in revenue.
To avoid a $15,000 environmental...
Review.
Review, okay. Now therefore be resolved, I'm assuming you can just write that in. That the Newmarket Town Council does hereby authorize a TA to enter into a contract amendment with Hazen and Sawyer PC not to exceed $259,100 for engineering services related to developing the Mackwell. Further, the town council does hereby authorize a TA to enter into a future contract amendments with notice to the town council. And lastly, and I wanted to, I think, I don't know if this was Ms. Mark, Steve? Should that read 2014-15-33?
Nope, it's the first...
So it is 01?
It's the first ordinance of this fiscal year.
Oh, okay, I just thought I'd ask, because it looked a little different.
Yep, it's an ordinance and not a resolution.
Okay. Whereas RSA 36, semicolon, 26 authorizes the legislative body of the town of Newmarket to adopt rules and regulations from municipality, from municipally-owned water systems located within the boundaries, and whereas the town of Newmarket last adopted water regulations in February 11 of 1991, now therefore let it be ordained by the Newmarket Town Council that current water regulations are repealed and are replaced by the amended document. This ordinance shall take effect upon passage.
Is it amended or appended?
Append it, it is appended. When you receive your whole packet, there's a, as you got in your email today, it's about a 38-page document that will be replacing the 1991 water regulations.
The water were... That's not amended?
No, it is appended, because this, you're repealing the former ones, you're adding new ones, so you're repealing it. The 91 regulations have been amended over the years. There's questionable adoption of some of the amendments, so we want to start new, and this is the one that the Water and Sewer Director and the town attorney worked on, and we'll be here at the next meeting to discuss.
Now, this obviously has nothing whatsoever to do with setting up any kind of a water, you know, a different, okay.
Water delivery, yeah, no.
Just wanted to ask the question. And that is the meeting. Phil?
Question?
Excuse me.
So this whole document will become the ordinance?
Yep.
So that this is the ordinance then?
Yep, the old one will be pulled out, the new one will be...
Is there any way we could get something that is like side-by-side or that, like puts us...
Side-by-side.
Yellow line it or something.
Counselor Pike asked me earlier, I sent out the old one. We're going to give you, the red line doesn't even work, because it was basic, it was rewritten. We're going to give you, summarize what the big, the major change.
Brief then or something.
Right, that's what's going to happen.
What changed?
Yeah, because I can read this and I'm like...
It's going to be a summary of what happened. The other one, it was, it's a complete repeal, it's not a revision.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That was it, I was just going to update, because we've been going back and forth on email about that.
I shared with him the old one, and he's like, yeah.
I'm not doing that.
Any correspondence or closing comments from counselors? Counselor Bentley and O'Ford?
Yeah, I'm glad, Mr. Administrator, like you did last year, brought up Jeremy's thing. It's a great thing they've done, it's the fifth year, I think. And I spoke to him the other night, so besides donations, they also need volunteers, and they have several shifts, so go to the site if you're able to do that and give them a call or sign up. They have early shifts and medium shifts and late shifts, you don't need to go and be there all day. I did it last, last year, and it's really, it's really rewarding. So kudos to them for them doing this again, and hope everyone goes out and enjoys it.
That's it. And anyone else? Tomorrow, anybody that wants to stop by to the senior center and pay their respects with Martha, please come, you know? I think it's a nice day.
Yep.
The hours on that, Gary, or what?
Starts at 10.
Starts at 10 o'clock, yeah.
Should let Kim know, she...
Yeah, it's, we need a number.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We are adjourned.
Are we still on TV?
Yes, we are.